We're going forward. I'm gonna record it regardless, just in case at some point it it does not work and people are not seeing us, we will have this to post, okay? Alright, so um we're gonna go ahead and get started. We'll start with Jason. Uh Jason, can you tell me, why are you running for reelection for Questa School Board?
First, I wanna uh thank everybody for joining us uh for this forum, from the viewers and the candidates, it's a really important. To see what our what our views are on on things and uh just wanna thank the Questa news for for doing this for us. And I'm running for reelection uh cause I believe in the progress that we've made over the last few years and uh not just the progress, but you know, we faced some challenges from staffing to facilities. But what I like best is that we continued moving forward as a board and providing stability to the district um. So that we have a solid foundation to build on and and getting to see those results, uh it takes time. It's not something that happens just overnight. It takes the dedication and commitment of of everyone from our staff to uh the children, to our partners around the district, which which are the charter schools, from the uh post-secondary education partners that that we have and everybody working together. And so that's what makes this work. And we have uh, we've laid some solid foundations and I wanna be able to to see a lot of the things that we started um get finished. And sometimes the gears move slow, um you know, in government, it's it's always hard when you're trying to piecemeal um things uh with different funding sources and operating uh and maintaining a solid fiscal budget and staying within those parameters. So, you know, it's been a learning experience, a great opportunity. And I'll tell you why I ran the first time is because I don't like, I don't wanna be the person that's sitting on the sideline pointing out all the things that I disagree with. And uh you know, sometimes you just gotta roll up your sleeves and and put yourself out there to make a difference. And I'm not saying just a difference for for my kids because my son is enrolled in the district and um you know, we gotta do it for all children. And uh so that's why I ran the first time. Getting the experience and the knowledge that I've gained over the last uh three years has been great and and being part of the part of the movement forward is is uh, you know, that's where it's at. And you know, as long as I think whoever gets elected keeps the our children first and foremost uh in our minds and in our hearts, when we're making decisions, that's what we need to be doing.
Awesome, Jason, thank you very much for that. Uh so we'll go ahead and move over to Valerie. Valerie, why are you running as a candidate uh for the Questa School Board?
Um yeah, hi. So I just also wanna say thank you for having us here tonight and being able to share our values and our beliefs as to why we're um running or rerunning. Um so I gave it a lot of thought when I put in my candidacy for um school board. Um this is my first um election for school board. And so um and and if I looked down, I took a lot of notes. I was very intentional with just things that I'm passionate about. So if I look down, um that's that's kind of what I'm doing, just reading my notes. Um but I truly believe that when it comes to education, um and I'm gonna piggyback a little bit on Jason. I'm not sure if I'm allowed to do that, but how he said just roll up your sleeves and go for it. And that's really the approach that I took. Um I believe that change can happen in the best way. And I truly believe that I I do have two kids in the district, um but it it's not just about them, it it's about the children as a whole. And you know, I believe that the children should always come first. And part of my campaign that I have been doing was um children first. Um teachers heard and families and and teachers supported and staff. And I truly believe that every decision that we should make should prioritize their growth, their safety and their success. And seeing the challenges, you know, throughout the last few years of kind of seeing like the things that I've seen as a mom, as a community member, um as a a worker in the village of Questa. I truly believe that I can make a difference and that I have a, you know, I have some good ideas and and good opinions on on some great ideas that I think could benefit the, you know, the community and the school district as a whole in its entirety. Um, on our website, the Questa School District website, the mission is to challenge all students to accelerate their learning through rigorous instruction. And as of course, I do believe that vision, I also believe that it's only possible when we listen to the people who make our school strong, which is our educators, our families, and of course, the students themselves. Um I do recognize that I I do believe that I will bring something new and important to the school board as a woman's perspective. Um and so I'm really jumping on that bandwagon and I really believe that a woman's perspective um is important. And I do believe that I have great ideas and, you know, if elected to the school board, I would love to, you know, work with the current school board that is currently there and the ones that do get elected on there to continue the growth that they've already made, but also bring in some new and fresh ideas that I believe could benefit the school district in its entirety.
Wonderful, thank you, Val. Alright, moving over to Mike. Mike, why are you running for reelection to the Questa School Board?
Good evening, everyone. And if I turn my head this way, I got my little one sitting right by me and she's asking questions, so just, that's all it is. Um, truth be told, I wasn't too sure if I was gonna rerun. It took some kinda thinking, some deep searching to figure out if I had the time to do it and if I still wanted to. And at the end of the day, four years isn't enough. One term, you know, i- it you can get stuff started, but to keep it going, you gotta keep going. You know, hopefully I get elected for a second term. Um member Lovato knows that all too well. You know, you gotta keep going and and you gotta stick with your guns and keep moving. You know, whether it takes one, two, three, four terms, whatever it is, but I think we have a good, finally got good progress. We're moving forward. Um, sat down, talked to my kids, talked to my little one, and then I talked to my older daughter and they're like, you know, dad, I think you can do it still. So sat down, talked to coworkers and family and they all supportive. Um said they'd help me out on other avenues. So that's when I put my name in, because I think we still have a lot to do, a lot to move forward with in the positive. Um, I like that this board currently, we try not to look back on the past. We gotta get past that really. And just move hurdles, go over hurdles and keep moving forward. Because if we stop ourselves or continue to just look at the past, we're never gonna move forward as a district as a whole. And I think we're doing a good job. And when I say we, I mean our staff. You know, our staff, they work their butts off, whether it's admin or teachers or office staff or our custodians or cooks, we have a great district. And I'm proud to be part of it. And I hope I can just continue to support everybody as a whole and hopefully make sure our kids are safe and they're doing well in school and we can move forward with more projects. And you know, we're hoping that this GO bond is gonna pass, because if it does, I think that's really gonna help out our students as a whole, as well as our teachers. Um, you know, I'm glad that we were able to put it on this election. Um, we'll see what the voters have to say, but uh I just wanna be around at least for another four years to make sure we get some of our projects done and to see these kids succeed. I believe our staff is making strides every day and I'm glad to say that. So we'll see what what happens and hopefully I get reelected. But other than that, that's all I have right now.
Awesome, thank you, Mike. Uh Jose, why are you running for reelection to the Questa School Board?
That's a question that I think continues to be asked is what what are you thinking? Well, it all started um when I first moved back and I had the ability to go away to school, go to college and then opportunity arose to come back and provide for my community. And when I got back, back in two thousand ten, all I kept hearing was the Questa Schools this, the schools that, the district this. It was, it was awful to hear. This is the place that I graduated. A place that I am truly proud to be from. I wear my wildcat on my chest proudly. And that's what I wanted everyone that came from there to wear that same wildcat patch proudly. And it was very disheartful to see what was going on. So like what uh President Rael said was the only way to make change is to get involved yourself. So that's what I did is I talked to my family, talked to the kids. I said, you know what? I don't want you to have to go to this school district the way it is right now. I want you to be proud when you walk out of there with that diploma, being able to do something. So I put my hat in the race back in two thousand twelve. I was elected in thirteen. And I have been there now, just it'll be uh thirteen years on now in December. So I've been there a while. But what we've had to crawl out of has been, I think, the biggest uh thing that I have to say that I've been very proud of is I've been involved um heavily to to be able to get this school back to where it's going. And now there is an actual roadmap of where we're trying to get. And without the past, we're able to learn from our mistakes. And I see now the new board. It's been great, because now we have a roadmap that we've been able to create. And that's the map that we're uh that we're on. And I'm super excited for the the GO bond. And I think that's gonna be a big topic uh coming into November fourth. So that's been the biggest pieces, just getting the district, getting it to where it needs to be, make the kids proud, getting the kids ready for career readiness, whether it's college, whether it's the trades, whether it's just straight into work. That's what we're trying to do is have them all prepared in some way or fashion. The second part that I've always wanted to do and I've been trying to do is, and I see it, is we gotta get these parents involved in these children's lives. There's a handful of parents that you see that volunteer for the same events over and over, the same parents, the same handful of them. And then there's a bigger handful of parents that don't get involved. Those are the parents that we need to find some way as a board, as a community. How do we get involved? How do we get them to be involved with their kids? That that's gonna, that's what's gonna make a successful human being is being involved with the children. And that's what I wanna definitely emphasize uh going into this term if elected is one, get that GO bond passed, finish that roadmap that we created and continue getting these parents involved in these children's lives. That that is so critical. And I think uh once the parents get involved, you'll start to see a change in your uh children's future. And that's what we're chasing. I think here as a community is it takes all of us to raise them. Let's get involved. And that's what I'm doing here is getting involved, doing the changes and uh standing up for my community and doing what we gotta do. And I want everyone, like I said, is walk out with that wildcat patch proudly and not be afraid to say, yeah, I'm from Questa, I graduated and here we go.
Um awesome, thank you. Uh Jose. Um, so guys, just so you know, there's just some issues with the lagging of the live stream. So I just went ahead and posted that we're just gonna record it. Um and then we'll post it in its entirety, because it looks like Zoom keeps it shares for like three minutes and then it goes off. So just know that that's what we're gonna end up doing, because at this point, it's um it's just interrupting people's ability to hear the the stream, okay? Alright, and we're recording, so we're good to go. Um Jason, uh we heard from some educators uh who are asking us what your opinion is on the four-day versus a five-day school week. So what are your thoughts about this? Are you muted, Jason?
You know, I was part of uh and have been part of the calendar committee. Kind of to echo a little bit of what Mr. Lovato was talking about, uh we had two, two teachers and one parent that would come consistently to these uh committee meetings. And it's it's kinda hard when you don't get the participation. And I gotta echo what Vice President Lovato said about engaging the community to show up, to be a part of of what we have going on, because far too often they say, well, those decisions were made and nobody knew about it. The board always posts the agendas when 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 we're gonna meet and when the committee meetings are. And it's just, how do we get the community to be engaged and involved? That's key. Now, I did have an issue with uh the four-day week, the way it was going. Because when you look at attendance, that that was is a huge problem. And not just our district, but it districts across the state um on a four-day calendar. The issue that sometimes comes up are student athletes, they're missing, they're missing uh instruction because they're uh playing games away. And I I truly support them, but and and they they did good, you know what I mean? They did get good grades and and were able to power through that, but what we did find is that if we didn't have school on a Monday, then Tuesday we were having issues with attendance. Or how that worked out. If we had a snow day during that week and we said, we need you to come to school on Friday to make up that snow day, we only had one at the high school, I I believe like ten or twelve students that showed up on that Friday. So when we're talking about learning loss and trying to build uh career readiness and even for our little ones down in the elementary, it's huge when you're missing a day of school. And so that's how come I had some reservations about the four-day calendar. Now, in the, what we proposed this last cycle had, it was a blended one where you have five days for the first half of the school year. And then when you come back from from uh Christmas break, you would transition to a four-day. That's what we what we said, we would try it out, but the PED didn't like that schedule, so it it was a no-go. But what we implemented now is a four-day where you have to go, if you miss a Monday because of a holiday, then you have to be to school on Friday. And that seems to be working. Uh so as long as that keeps working and the data supports it with with our learning, then I'm okay with the four-day. But if we have to, if the data comes back where our kids aren't meeting the benchmarks, then we have to look at what's best for the kids. And if that means being in school five days a week, then that's that's where I'll go. But what we're seeing now is that our kids are meeting the benchmarks and have having them come to school on a Friday if they miss the Monday seems to be working great. And if that continues, I'm okay with the four-day. It's just, we gotta look at data to have driven results. So that's my stance on it.
Great, thank you, Jason. Um Valerie, uh same question for you. The the teacher group that messaged us asked us to ask all four um candidates. So just wanted to see, what was your opinion uh on the four-day versus five-day school week? What are your thoughts?
Yeah, um so thank you for that question. Um I think it's really one that hits home for many families and educators in our district. Um, the discussion between a four and five-day week, um in this current election, I've talked to quite a bit of teachers and I've also talked to quite a bit of family members on how they kinda feel, because it's actually been a concern for teachers, educators, staff and family members. Um but it's incredibly important, um because it impacts not just our classrooms, but it impacts our homes, our work schedules and our community uh technically as a whole. Um so I'm gonna start with uh the four-day week. Um and hopefully I can keep this under five minutes. So um many educators are that I have spoken to are actually in favor of the four-day week. And there there are good reasons for that. Um I do believe that across the country, districts have definitely moved to a four-day week. They have reported um better morale um among teachers, less burnout and even improved attendance. Um, I I will have to agree with um with uh Jason on on his stance as well, where um I actually do really enjoy this um current schedule right now. I am huge on open communication when it comes to myself as a parent, myself as a as a community member. And it was very cut and clear that we were gonna have these Friday schools. And I was able to prepare as a a mother, a a a worker, a working mom. And I was able to prepare my schedule to to fit the needs of of you know, knowing when my child and children were gonna go to the Friday school. Um and so um I definitely think that that will definitely improve attendance for both students and staff. Um, teaching is very demanding. It's not just about the hours in the classroom. You know, teachers spend evenings, they spend weekends grading, planning lessons and preparing materials for, you know, the upcoming weeks and months. Um so I definitely think that a shorter week gives them the chance to recharge mentally and emotionally. Um and it gives them that extra day to make a big difference and hopefully helping them stay motivated and effective for the week that's coming up. Um for students, I mean, I believe that the same benefits apply. Kids today, they face a lot of pressure. There's academic expectations, social challenges and even the effects of social media and um you know, having to, you know, do this and do that and keep up your grades. And in Questa, you can actually be a dual-sport student. And um that's that's huge. You know, there aren't a lot of schools that offer dual sports. And I think it's great that they're allowed to do that. But again, it takes a toll. And I do believe that that day is a good, you know, day for recharge. Um it also gives the older students opportunities to get work experience, volunteering or participate in other extracurricular activities. Um the Cultivo program, they were working on Fridays and you know, they were able to go to work on Fridays and and then there was school and stuff. So um I understand that, you know, we can't ignore some of the concerns that come with with a change like this, I said. But I have heard some of the biggest concerns is like issue of food security or issue of childcare. Um but again, it it really goes hand in hand with the mental health of the teachers and the students. Um for many of our students, school meals are a reliable source of nutrition and and perhaps losing that just for that extra day. And it could have a big impact, you know, so not every family has someone available to stay home with them on that extra day. And child can be expensive or especially here in rural uh you know, rural northern New Mexico, there is no childcare, you know, um that's easily accessible. So um I do believe that these are all real and valid concerns. And I've 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 heard from both both sides. Um, but I definitely think that we have to address them before, you know, we have to address them and look at the big picture before a decision, a decision is made. And according to Jason, it seems like you know, um a plan was made and and you know, I know attendance is kind of an issue, but I really think too, like honing down and ensuring that resources are available for the students that are in sports that, you know, do miss that academic um period to ensure that even though there's not a Friday school, they're still able to make up those assignments and and they're still held to the accountability that they will attend school. That way, you know, we have a good outcome for the teachers and the schools and we're able to, you know, have it best of both worlds as as best as as best as we can.
Great, thank you, Valerie. Um Mike, same question for you. Uh what's your opinion on four-day versus five-day school week?
I like the four-day school. Um, me personally, it helps me out a lot, because just with work, I have that extra day to hang out with my little one. Um, and also if Kaylee has something going on, I can help her out, stuff like that. And she's also able to work. Um, the one thing, though, with the four-day work or the four-day week is President Rael's right. It's one of those things that we gotta make sure that our kids are doing good with their testing, everything. But in saying that, that starts at home. It's not just an educator um job, right? It's all of our jobs to educate our kids and help them on those days off with spelling tests, whatever it may be. Um so it starts at home as well. And I think if we can continue that and get our parents involved uh to help out on those Fridays, you know, if even if it's just simple reading a book or doing some math problems, anything like that, that'll help our kids out a lot. The other thing I like is you know, to a certain extent, it saves the district some money, you know, we um electricity, water usage, all of that, it does help out, you know, every little bit counts. The one thing that I will say is that with the four-day week, I do like it, but it's hard when we have either educators or kids taking, you know, doctors appointments on a Monday or Tuesday. You know, one of those things with this Friday stuff is, you know, we try to encourage everybody to make sure they get their appointments done on Friday. That way they're not missing any school, anything of that nature. Um is it hard to do? Absolutely. But again, if you plan ahead, it can be done. Um, I like this current schedule. When we are off on a holiday, we go to school on that uh Friday. But in regards to the little ones, it's a really good reset. And I agree with Val that you know, all of our kids need that reset and our educators for sure. Um I know my little one, when she gets home on Thursday, she's she's done. She wants to have that break. So it does help our little one stay engaged. You know, wanna be excited for for Monday to come around. And the same thing with the older ones, you know, they have the weekends to do their sports, to do work if they need to, stuff like that. So I I've always liked the four-day. Um you know, I grew up in a five-day, you know, I think most of us on the screen did actually. And uh we may joke around and be like, oh, we did it. But the reality is, everything's different nowadays. You know, we didn't have such a social, heavy social media presence, you know, different things going on. Times change and we gotta move with those changes. And if we can't, we're just failing everybody, including our educators and our kids. So I like it. Um, I really, me personally, I don't wanna go back to a five-day, but that's just me. Obviously, I'm just one voice, but uh yeah, I like it and hopefully it stays the way it's going. I think the schedule's really working really well, so we'll see how it goes.
Awesome, thank you, Mike. Jose, same question for you. What's your opinion on but four-day versus five-day?
Yeah, I I could cheat here a little bit. I was uh involved with the five-day and involved with the four-day. I understand why we went to a four-day from the five-day. Um, and the the reason was exactly what uh Mike said is, it was all budget-driven. When I first got onto the board, we were uh, it it was bad. The state had taken it all away. Uh we had got it back uh when I got voted in. Um, that following year, we had to go to supplement supplemental income. So that means your budget is basically frozen. So one of the things that we had to come up with is, alright, how do we, how do we become more efficient and still teach our kids and keep the money in the classrooms? And that's where we created a four-day school week. And since then, it I think it's worked out great. Um, I think we've we've tweaked a lot of things. Um, we've, we did it, because we saw a lot of athletes that were missing. What happened is they would go to a game on a Tuesday. We didn't have school on a Monday. They would miss or come in late Wednesday. So now they're out basically almost two and a half days from the classroom. And they're going, they may have another game come Thursday. So they went to school half a day Wednesday, half a day Thursday, and they're leaving on Thursday as well. So they got literally eight hours of classroom. And I think we've been able to adjust some of that things. Um, and what we tried doing is on a Friday was extra help. We would bring in some tutors, we'd bring in other things to make sure that we can help the kids catch up on their homework. Uh, cause each student is only allowed so many uh so much time out of the classroom. And we gotta make sure that we keep that into account as well. And that way, it's not just, oh, four days, five days, four days, five days. No, there's a lot that goes into when you're planning the four-day and the five-day um budget. Um, your calendar, all that is approved by the PED. So in order to make sure that you have all that going, you have to get it fully approved first. So it's not just oh, I decided to do it this way or do it that way. It's not the way it works. It's setting down, you gotta have committee meetings, you had to have public input. So all that is required, all that is in policy. It's not just five board members sitting there and deciding what they want. What it is is, the board has to appoint two committee members from the board. They have to appoint administrative staff and then they have to beg, basically beg meeting members to join these committees. And then you go through processes. Um I run the budget committee. So when I do that, we run it where we meet at least at a minimum every other week going to budget. So that way we could say we had six to eight meetings. This is what we came up with, this is what our budget looks like. And this is the same thing with calendars. You have the same type, that you got two board members, you got the administrators, teachers. And again, I know uh when Jason ran, when he runs this calendar committee, you're begging community members to show up. So it's not just an easy task. And this is where I'm asking the community to please get involved. Whether it's four-day or five-day, it's your guys' involvement that is gonna drive that calendar. Me personally, I was super excited when I helped create that four-day back in, I think it was sixteen, seventeen is when we created that four-day. So it's been going fairly strong and we've been able to tweak it to make it work. And now we have the data. Over the last seven years, we've learned what works, what doesn't work. And I think we're implementing what works. And I like that. And uh I think we'll keep pushing that, whether I'm elected or not. I'm an advocate for the four-day, uh whether as a community member or a bu- board member. That's gonna be my my take on that is, I'm a I'm a huge opponent of the four-day.
Awesome, thank you, Jose. Alright, um back up to Jason. Um so now we're gonna get into a little bit of questions that are specific, um and they won't be the same across the board. So Jason, there seems to be a disconnect between local charter schools and Questa School Board decisions. Think we saw that in the recent uh school board meeting. Um, can you tell us how the school board has worked to bridge that gap? notably in regard to the gold bond initiative you're muted Jason
Jason here I'm mute
you know that's a great question it's a tough question and uh thank you for putting me on the spot with this one being the school board president but you know what challenges come and it's important that we don't shy away from them whether it's in life in general or or when you're an elected official so that's that's kind of how the cookie crumbles I'll tell you initially we when we put the resolution for the geo bond we have a an advisor um for that and with attorneys and everything else to get all the verbiage correctly and it's all driven by state statute the board doesn't get a say so in what gets put on the ballot that has to be done by the attorneys and and our bonds uh our bonds partners and so that's how that came about now our charter schools are not on the ballot because state statute doesn't allow for that because they are not uh they're they're not district charters they're state charters and that's what was conveyed to the board and we moved forward because the gold bond is huge we we absolutely need to to pass that and so we went forward with that now we're not the only uh district in the state that's getting asked the same question because Taos has seven charters in their district some are are district charters and and some are not here's the thing there is ways to work with the charter schools there there is so to say that we're not open to to coming together and figuring out how we can move forward uh with the process you know w- we have my job as the president is to uh reach out to the other board members from the school charters to Taos Charter you know or Taos uh Taos municipal schools and I did I said how are you guys approaching this because you know you guys are getting beat up in the papers and uh and we're we're in the same boat with you guys so how are you approaching that and I'm happy to say that you know through collaboration A and and being able and open minded to hear their concerns and and visiting with them in person and opening doors and communication is huge rather than building walls and that's how we have to approach everything we do just because they're charter schools it isn't an us against them it isn't a me against you we are all one community uh the district is huge it goes from Amalia Costilla La Lama the Fish Hatchery uh Red River they're all included in the Questa School District so when I got elected to to represent the district well guess what those charters are in our district and so are the the families that live there and so when we make decisions I think like I said before in other school board meetings we need to keep the children first and how can we help not just the children in our district but uh the charters as well and that takes cooperation it takes open communication being able to to say hey can we have a cup of coffee and that's how that started uh with Red River in particular um just this week we did get a letter from Roots and Wings to open that communication and their their request is to be included in in SB nine um which is an uh another huge initiative that needs to be passed I mean for Christ's sake that's all our maintenance funding and it ain't just for for Questa School District um Roots and Wings gets money from there and so does uh so does the charter school in Red River the geo bond specific we're in a little different place than than Taos schools is so you know I wish we had more time because it it it's a huge uh huge topic honestly but I can say this though we have been able to open those doors
did that was that the I don't know if that happened sorry um
you know I think the best thing uh for us all whether I'm elected or or the other fellow board members or Ms. Be Hill is to keep in mind that we're all a community uh when when tragedy happens we all bound together but we also got it bound together for the good too and our children and I say our children are are number one and that's why we're all up here that's why we put ourselves out is because we need to keep their best interest at heart yes to the gold bond and yes to SB nine
very good thank you Jason Valerie um alright we heard from some educators who asked oh I'm sorry this is the third question rural school districts across New Mexico struggle with limited resources what do you see is the greatest operational or staffing challenges within our schools and how do you think the school board could help so educators and faculty feel more supported
yes um so in my view um is I believe the greatest operational staffing challenge right now is from from my point of view I mean if you ask Jose you know who has who has great knowledge of the school board and that goes back years you know I'm sure there's there's other ones but from my perspective um in our district right now it's it's really retaining our educators supporting staff um and just making sure that the people that we do currently have feel valued supportive and part of something meaningful um I know I keep repeating myself but I I have talked to a lot of the teachers and um you know we're we're asking a lot from our teachers in a rural community they're not just educators they're counselors they're mentors they're sometimes even stand-in family members um you know in a small rural district like Questa a single teacher might wear multiple hats um you know they may be teaching several grade levels subjects um they may be leading extracurricular activities um and still trying to find time to you know time for lesson planning and grading um it could be exhausting and you know with continued limited resources you know I want to make sure that we give our students and our staff and our educators the same opportunities that perhaps maybe a bigger district may have and I know that funding is always an issue um and and it's and it's difficult you know it's difficult when you rely on state grants to to give these opportunities to these educators and these staff members and these students but I definitely think that you know the effects of all of this is turnover difficulty maybe filling certain positions maintaining consistency with some of our students um you know especially like I keep hearing you know students that are athletes and missing or missing school and ensuring that they do get you know time to finish their homework and so just making sure that those resources are there even in eh even in a rural community um I do believe that the school board plays a critical role in addressing you know these issues first and foremost I do believe that the board can help by creating an environment where educators feel heard and supported you know where a student can come to a board meeting and and speak on on you know what they feel and and what they're going through you know not just during board meetings but I'm saying just throughout the year I believe that teachers and staff need to know that their voices matter in decisions that affect their classrooms um there if they're a a coach um or just in general um and sometimes that starts with something as simple as listening sessions surveys teacher advisory committees and I know that there have been these committees that have been put together um and but you know really really honing in on on ensuring that we know like we give the teachers a support and and you know I've heard that some people some teachers don't want to enter these committees because they say it doesn't matter what I say I'm not listened to and so it's really showing it's really showing the support of of the school board to ensure that we have an open communication with them um you know um so yeah so anyways I know that I think that a way that we can help is by looking at creative incentives maybe support systems for our students and our staff and our educators while we may not have the same funding as like larger districts I do believe that we can focus on things that make Questa unique and appealing um this could include you know I know that they recently had a professional development day and um I heard you know good things came from that you know um and more so tailored to rural educators mentorship programs for new teachers partnerships with nearby colleges to create a pipeline perhaps for students teachers to stay and work here housing I know is a big issue I could talk about that all day um and so you know we just want to make sure that we provide as much support as we can and and I'm not in any way shape saying that you know there is no support at all but I definitely think that the school board has a really important job to ensure that you know they're heard they're listened to the the families are being heard they're listened to especially in a rural community um so yeah so back to sum it up I believe that the biggest challenge we face is keeping our amazing educators here keeping them motivated to work keeping our students engaged in work um I mean I see a huge difference at the high school with you know all of the fun um giveaways that they're giving to the students and the acknowledgement of when they're doing great things and I believe that that should be all across the board whether it's educators um you know staff students families you know if they show up for like a a games night or a some sort of event I think like let's applaud those families because they could be at home and they chose to be at the school or at an event with with their you know with their um student and one more thing I know I'm over time but I would like to say you know I intended the game the dig pink game the other day and the support there was just really really awesome and that would be really awesome if we can get that kind of support for athletes to continue and grow bigger but also take it to the school and to you know um help support our educators and and I think the school board plays a really important role with that
awesome thank you Val alright Mike um from your perspective what is the most pressing challenge impacting student learning and achievement in Questa schools and what steps do you think the board could take in addressing and improving it
so from my perspective the impact with their kiddos and stuff like that is it starts at home it really does and we need to make sure our parents are involved um I I get it we're all busy I understand that but our kids come first because they are our future and we need to understand that but it really starts at home and from there if we can do little things at home that'll help our educators our teachers everybody as a whole to get these kids just continuing to move forward so again this is a a more broader statement really but it's 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 a home thing it really is and I know it's tough but we gotta take the time to be patient with our kids and make sure they're you know doing good check in on them make sure that we have the power school app to check on our grades you know for the ones in middle school and high school and our little ones to make sure that they're doing their homework and they're understanding it if we started at home it makes our teachers lives a little bit easier which we all know they could use some uh some help all the time it's a stressful job so I think if we can do that we'll gain more success than where we are now the other thing um is this geo bond I've said it since the beginning if our students and our staff are not comfortable in these buildings because it's too hot too cold how are they supposed to focus on learning and teaching when it's it's just not working the building itself is not comfortable for them you know and really I think if we can pass that hurdle we're gonna see improvement just with that's with that step you know we gotta make sure that they're comfortable because once they focus on you know their work kids will do it they absolutely will but really it it is our older buildings it's you know making sure parents can help out at home and if and if it's not parents you know I'll I'll be the first to say my parents are are helping my little one with her spelling words it's so family involvement as a whole not just parents um you know really needs to be at the core of of all of this to make sure our little ones and our older ones you know succeed and and move forward um so really again I'm gonna repeat I think we all are you know it it starts at home and if it's successful at home it'll be successful in the classroom and it'll help our teachers out so I think that's a a good start a good foundation I think if that works you know we keep moving forward and support our students and our educators with new programs whatever it is that they see fit that they can challenge our kids with you know if they see that our kids are learning and catching on fairly quick on on some of these smaller processes that they can start challenging these kids that'll be a huge help as well because then they will be able to accomplish a lot more than what they are now right all of us are always capable of accomplishing more we just got to be challenged but we gotta keep going at home to challenge our kids that way our teachers can then challenge them even more
awesome thank you Mike alright Jose the geo bond has been a big topic of conversation in northern Taos County uh what is your stance on this and what will the money uh be used for
that's a good question I'm glad I got that because uh it can answer all three of the other candidates questions so it's kind of a little cheating but I'll take it I mean I gotta get an upper leg on everybody just uh just going after it but the geo bond is gonna be crucial we've talked about the buildings the state they're in the age of the elementary Alta Vista Elementary I believe is about sixty-five to seventy years old we've done upgrades after upgrade after upgrade multiple times I think you can only put a Band-Aid so much and then after a while you just can't even see and I think that's what we've done to this building is it's covered in Band-Aids so the goal there is to basically eliminate the Alta Vista building and that's where I think would because we own twenty-eight acres in that property that could be there be a potential site for a new building or my thinking is putting anywhere from six to eight houses for our teachers we have three houses right now that um staff stays in um it's not enough we have I believe six teachers that are from out of state that had a hard time finding uh places to live we have twenty acres right there that we can do that and provide a decent house eliminate the old houses we have there and put some housing for our staff they used to do that back in the day is they would have houses for teachers um they would do to live on campus and that's something I would like to see on that property the high school property the goal would either be to add on to the high school put a separate little piece for the elementary um share meal spaces uh different other common things that they could share or put a whole brand new all in one building with a separation for um the elementary middle school and high school so there's two options there and I think we've had a committee we've had about four meetings to discuss that so it's not a hundred percent in stone of what we're gonna do as far as the high school piece I know that we're gonna get a new building and it's just a matter is it gonna be a full out new building for pre-K to twelve or is it gonna be an elementary building tied to the high school in some way or form but I think that's up to the constituents and how they like to see that um the other piece to that is it addressed the housing part of that is we have all that property this is where we need to start helping our community out is we lose a lot of potential staff that could come in to live or to come and teach but no place to live and this is where I'm chasing um the trades is we need to find staff that could come teach the trades well how can they if there's no place to live um with the super fun site going on they've taken all the housing and they've also pushed the housing prices and market way up so you can't even afford to live or rent here on a teacher salary or um anything like that so that's something that if we have our own location we can set the price over there for the teachers they can rent at a low low price and they have a place to live and it boosts morale right there so that's the importance I think of the geo bond if we pass that is getting these kids these students and staff a place where they feel comfortable again I go back to my first initial question of why I'm running is to be truly proud and wear that W that big wildcat on your chest proudly and I think this geo bond does that it's um bringing everything into the new thing um I think this would only be our third geo bond that I know of that has gone through it uh after talking to Mr. Bernie Torres he told me that uh since he's known there's only been two geo bonds one was to build the high school and the gym and then the next one was to build the the fields that we have right now so I think it's critical that it's time to give our kids a new place to live and study and work and all that stuff and I think to piggy to add to Jason's thing or actually piggyback is the way we get this through with the charter schools and all that The way we get this through with the charter schools and all that, the open communication thing is huge, and I think Jason nailed it is. Without that communication, without your talking to the community, to help the people out there. Nothing moves forward, and I think that's the key, is communication, communication, communication. And that's my stance on the Geo bond, that's what I like to see, and that's why I decided to run again, is to see this through. Utilize my experience, um. And just move forward with that, and that's what I wanna do is finish this roadmap that I started thirteen years ago.
Great, thank you, Jose. Alright, Jason, uh, recently, there has been talk about Questa selling the Red River Charter School property to Red River. Essentially breaking it off of the Questa Independent School District, what is the board's stance been on that and what is your stance on it?
Well, we've had some lively discussion about this, um, and. And rightfully so, because at the end of the day, we're, we're in control of uh of public dollars. And what's the best way to utilize those? Currently, the district has three properties. And so, that's the, the old school in Amalia. And that one, if Alta Vista's sixty years old, that one's gotta be bumping seventy or eighty. I don't remember, I don't even know when that was built, but it it could be up. Close in there, ninety years old, and it's vacant. And at this point, you know, when we're looking at what assets does the district have that we could liquidate to. To help bolster our our efforts in in the classroom, that, there's three properties, um. The other one is the old administration building that's by the uh, by the grocery store. That one is in such disrepair that it probably needs to just be demolished, honestly. And so for Amalia and for the administration building down here, uh. They're more of a liability to the district than they are an asset at this point, uh, hands down, um. Uh, I think we've been very fortunate that nothing has happened in those buildings that have put us in 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 a bad uh position. Now for the uh, the property in Red River, uh, we leased that to that charter school. That lease money is determined by the state, we don't get to say, well. We wanna charge you a hundred thousand for that property for the use of it, we don't own the buildings, we just own the property, that property is zoned as uh historic there. So, um, I believe getting fair mark market value for it, um. And then bringing that to the table with the, with with the the assets that we have, that we can tell the people, the community that, hey, look. We we gotta trim fat somewhere. And those are three places that we can come up with some extra dollars that can help fund at least the design. Or or going out and getting an architect for our new buildings, uh. Does it benefit the district and the community by getting rid of these uh properties? Absolutely, it does. Because we only have our operational budget, and so if we can get dollars from. From places that aren't being utilized right now, aside from Red River, uh, that's a great way to start. Now, for Red River, uh, part of that communication with our charter school is it would benefit them. Uh, no doubt about it, that little school's been around for twenty-seven years right now, and. You know, they've done a good job of of maintaining it, and I can be proud to say that. You know, they, there's kids that from within our district that attend that little school up there. Do they not deserve better facilities? Absolutely, they do, they just hustled for almost a million dollars worth of capital outlay to add two new classrooms up there. But that has to come to the board to allow those to be built, and I'm proud to say that we passed that eh at the last board meeting. To allow them to make their little facility better up there. And I I honestly agree with the other fellow board members, that if we sell them that property, that'll give them some autonomy. And and uh, and I think it's works out best for both communities. So, yeah, I'm in favor of of uh, selling that property. But we gotta remember that we have to do this correctly, it has to be vetted and uh. Make sure that it's all legal, the way that it it has to be done, and we're not just gonna go out there and say, yeah, we're gonna sell you this, uh, to be nice about it, no. We have to look out for the interest of the district, A number one, but it has to be done transparent. And so there's no idea that we're doing anything behind the, you know, in the in the shadows. That's why we put it on the on the board agenda to discuss it. And and I think, you know, with due diligence, we can get this deal across the table. We did it with with the uh, the Costa building out there, um, with the county to to work with the county. To get that for their anciano building, and and it took almost a year to get that. That done and and to where they can work on it and make that a good place for our seniors. So our district is really great at at working with communities, and like, once again, it's being able to look outside the box. How can we do things that are gonna benefit all our community as a whole and then moving forward with a plan?
Great, thank you, Jason. Alright, Valerie, um, families want to feel connected and included in what happens in the schools. How will you strengthen communication between the district parents and broader community in your role as a board member if elected?
Um, so if elected, I am a communication person. I have a child at Alta Vista and I have a child at the high school, and I keep talking about my children, but. I mean, there's lots of people that have children at Alta Vista, and there's lots of people that have children, or all of them are at the high school, or, you know. Regardless, I, I wanna know what my child is doing, and I'm a huge. I'm a huge person for communication, I want to talk to the teachers that educate my child, just like Mike said, it starts at home. And so if I don't know that, you know, one of my kids or is struggling. How am I supposed to help them, to help them better at school, for them to thrive in school and then be able to to help that teacher? Um, and and I really do believe that, you know, that is like one of my core values is is. Really having open communication and one of the things that I know that if I'm elected to school board, that is going to be a huge. One of my passions is just open communication, I believe that families, students, educators and staff. Deserve to know what's going on, and I'm not talking about just in Questa, I'm talking about in the entire school district, and. I'm not talking about just in the schools, I'm talking about all of the surrounding communities. You know, whether the kids from Questa go to Red River, or if there's kids that from Red River that are transitioning from eighth grade to ninth grade here. Everybody should have open communication in everything that's going on, and I feel that, you know, if there's. And I know, I know it's tough to say like, well, you know, we do, we post flyers and we do this, I I really honestly truly feel that. There there has to be just a little bit more, and there has to be more communication, not everybody has social media, not everybody gets to come into town, so how do we? How do we have that open communication with with the grandparents, you know, that are raising these children that? Don't, you know, they may have even still a home phone, you know, how how can we effectively communicate? With these families to ensure that, you know, if there is an issue at school with a child that. It can effectively be brought up and so and so the child could could feel supportive. You know, if there's an issue with a student and a teacher, how how can we mitigate that with clear communication, you know? I really truly believe that it's okay to disagree, it doesn't mean that there has to be quarrel, like, you know. We're all, you know, let's, we need to act like adults, we need to be informed, we need to have open communication with each other, it's okay, it's oh, it's. You can agree to disagree and that's okay, and again, if I'm elected, I really, that is gonna be one of my biggest passions is. To ensure that there is open communication with. Staff members from Red River, with community members from Red River, you know, the children that are in the schools right now. They're future employees to businesses here in Questa, businesses, you know, in Red River, businesses in Taos, you know. Kids that are gonna start their own businesses, you know, maybe college isn't their thing and and they want to start their own business, and, you know. We we wanna have that open communication with families and and um with the district and, you know, like I had mentioned earlier, if elected. I want staff to feel comfortable to, you know, I understand that that school board is for policy, safety and financials, I I completely understand that. And, you know, there's always a chain of command, and of course, I will always respect that, and, you know, like I said, if elected, I will. Respectfully work with the other school board members, because you need to work together to keep going, you know, there's this roadmap that. You know, um, Jose talked about, and, you know, let's move all of the good things that are happening right now forward to to make the school system. A better place, not just Questa, Red River, Lama, you know, the surrounding communities. You know, how can, how can we involve them, and I think that being open and having a good line of communication. There may be somebody that doesn't have a a a student or a child in the district that may want to be part of these committees because they've had experience, or. They've, they've, you know, maybe they had work experience in that, you know. You know, maybe they worked at a bank and they retired and and they're able to give good financial advice, or, you know, be in be on the finance committee, and. You know, I do believe that. I can talk about open communication all day long, um. Ask any of my my children's teachers, um, I am a psychopath when it comes to communicating with them to ensure that. If they need anything, I wanna hear the good and the bad and the ugly, because the only way that I can help them succeed is. Is knowing what is really going on and knowing that, you know, if I know that, you know, a friend of a friend is struggling. I want open communication to know that that student feels comfortable enough to go to somebody and speak with them, and that something's gonna be done about it.
Alright, thank you, Valerie. Uh, Mike, and we are, we're rounding up on questions, guys, so. Uh, we're gonna do my cosa and then I think we'll we'll wrap it up, just so you guys know for timing purposes. Um, Mike, when looking back on your time as Questa School Board Member, what would you say the biggest accomplishment of the board has been?
We all survived it, that's for sure. Um, to be honest, uh, i- it's not gonna be a popular answer, but I don't think we're there yet. I think we've made strides, to be honest with you, but to say it's a full-blown accomplishment, I don't. Think it's fair to say we've we've gotten there yet, I think we need to get through this Go bond, SB nine, the teacher housing. So there's more to go, I think, I can say, the good things that have happened is we've gotten to this point where we are now with putting the Go bond on the ballot, stuff like that. But to say we really fully accomplished a big task, I don't think we're there, um, that's again, my own opinion. I'm not saying it's because we're lazy or we we, you know, haven't tried, but it's taking time. It takes a lot of time to get all this stuff figured out, to get it straightened out, you know, whatever it may be, but also a big learning curve. For really three of us, myself, President Rael and member uh Romero, you know, when you come in new, there's a lot to learn and. I thought I had a good grasp on budget because of of the county, but that's a whole different animal as opposed to what the school budgets are. You know, so it it honestly, about a year and a half, two years. Took me to learn, you know, what what this is, what acronym is that, stuff like that, so even just. Understanding all that is actually a big accomplishment in itself, to be honest with you, um, so I don't think we're there, I think we'll get there. And hopefully I can be a part of that within the next four years, um, obviously, that's not up to me, that's up to everybody who uh has a voice, you know, but uh. In this four years, it's too short, but I think we've made some good strides for sure, um, I hope we have anyways. Um, we'll see, you know, I also hope that the staff understands that. Sometimes it's tough and and we do wanna listen to them, but, you know, like Val said, there's a chain of command and and. Sometimes it's hard to be able to ride that fine line, you know, as a board member on how far are we reaching, you know, how legal is this if we? Talk about this or that, you know, it's a very fine line and and it's it's one that's uh hard to manage for sure. And we'll see, time will tell, but I think our biggest accomplishment accomplishments are yet to come, so we'll see how it goes and. Good luck to everybody.
Alright, thank you, Mike. Uh, Jose, um, let's see. If elected to serve another term. How do you think the board could encourage a district to adapt education to prepare students for rapidly changing jobs, trades and technologies?
This is.
The timer, one second, let's go.
This is a, this is, that's a good one, I I think uh, we need to start adapting, I I think uh. I think in our area, the trades are gonna become one of the biggest things, and what scares me is I've done a lot of conferences, I'm in the technology sector. Um, I've been at it for just over twenty years as a project manager and engineer, um. Doing multiple things, and what I was always told was, you must get educated, you must go to college, you must go to college. Well, now, the smart people that created all that stuff and now created things to eliminate jobs. And we have to look at, well, what jobs are not gonna be eliminated? That is the trades, the trades will not get replaced, and we gotta keep emphasizing it, and there's, of course, there's gonna be some other educated. Positions that you can't eliminate as well, you got these doctors, you got lawyers, you got programmers and uh certain engineers, there's certain things that are gonna be there. But the trades is gonna be one big thing that AI will not be able to take over. You you need the plumber, you need the electrician, you need the people maintaining, you need all that stuff, so. Being in that sector, having managed just over thirty-four employees. I have the trades basically that I manage every day, I have telecommunications linemen, I have splicers, I have. All that type of stuff, so I've gone through that, I've learned. What works and what doesn't, and that's my goal now is, and we've been, we've approached the PED, the Public Ed- Education Department is. How do I get our program at Kit Carson, how do we get them on the either the electrical side, the propane side? Or the telecommunications side, how do we get them in the school? How do we get the kids to graduate with at least a first or second year apprenticeship program? And that way, they're graduating, they're going straight to work, and they already have two years at at least. Some sort of path for them, and that's what we've been working on, uh, just in our work in general. Um, having owned a restaurant as well, that's another place that we start teaching basic accounting, stuff like that, different trades there as well, so there's different things that. Me, myself, and of course, my family is involved in, um, where I work is involved in, and the trades are gonna be huge, and I am a huge advocate for that, I'm also. Working with the state to figure out how we do that, I am, was very proud of, I created the first. In the state of New Mexico, the first telecommunications fiber optics apprenticeship program, so I just created that, so that's another trade that. I created, got it approved by the state, and it is now implementing that, and that's something that I can bring to the school district. As well, and these are the things that we're pushing, and just right in our backyard, we have. A potentially one of the biggest solar farms that's gonna be built in our footprint. Well, guess what, that takes a lot of employees to build, and those are trade jobs. Why can't we pull a pool from the Questa schools and put them towards that field and start building for the community? Th- that's what I plan to do, is I wanna work with the state, cause of course, everything has to go through the Public Education Department to get it approved. But I think if we have a solid plan and the state backs it up, just like my um apprenticeship program for fiber optics. Why would the Public Education Department deny something like that when, same thing on the electric side, those are all. Standardized programs already, let's bring it to the schools, let's get them starting at freshman sophomore year. Let's get them graduating with that first year, second year apprenticeship already under their belt, same thing with carpentry, it's all there. We have expertise all around us, start bringing it, introduce it, um. I've talked with other school districts that have put in um. Networking, they've put in nursing, they already put all these programs in place. In other districts, we could do the same thing in Questa, um, we could just elaborate ours a little more. Um, I'm speaking with the principal, um, and he's brought a lot of things to us. The goal is to bring in the nursing program to our school, the goal is to bring in, speak with uh Mike, how do we get the EMT program there? Firefighter program, and then, of course, all the other things that I mentioned earlier is bring these trades into the school, let's start getting them going. College ain't for everybody, well, at least let's give them a path to go down, and the trades are gonna be it, that's where I stand on that piece.
Great, thank you, Jose. Alright, guys, we have made it to the end of the panel, thank you very much for um. Your patience as we've dealt with some of these uh technical issues, Jose, you knew there was an outage today. And I just realized, uh, Zoom is owned by Azure and they're still getting back online, so, uh, that was part of why we could not stream. Um, that was, I was just reading that. I looked into it and um, yeah, so it was trying to pull it back up and it didn't work. So
Not a, not a Kit Carson issue. I'll just say that.
Yeah, but you know about outages, man. You told me, I'm just kidding.
I thought it had it repaired. I hadn't seen it.
Either way, it's all good. We're gonna go ahead and uh, we're gonna go ahead and record, we're, what we're recording. So uh, I'm gonna save this to YouTube and then I'll just post it for the community to see. Um, before we end though, any parting words? So Jason, we'll start with you. Go to Val, Jose, or Mike and then Jose. So Jason, parting words.
Thank you. Uh, sure. The uh, I, I can, I can honestly say and echo what uh, member Cordova had to say about the learning crew. And then being uh, chosen by the fellow board members to be the board president, added a little bit more extra to that, to that, those duties. And uh, you're right, it I can agree with uh, member Cordova. We, we've made some good accomplishments. I, I, I wholeheartedly believe that we've tried to engage our, our staff, our teachers. We've had uh, board meetings with elementary school on the agenda and just asked the teachers to come in and talk to us. Um, let us know what their needs are, what their wants are and how we can support that. We've also done that with the high school and uh, trying to keep open those lines of communication with the board. However, uh, the board only has one employee and that's the superintendent. So like member Cordova said, we, it's not that we don't wanna engage with staff, it's, we really can't um, to a certain extent. And so that's why we have those open forums for them to come and, and, and tell us what it is, what their hopes are, what we can do better uh, when we're guiding policy. Because the bottom line is they're the resident experts, they're the teachers, they're the boots on the ground. And I gotta give a shout out also uh, to the great job that they do uh, because that's not an easy job. At all. Uh, and, and so kudos to all our teachers for, for really sticking it out, digging in and, and getting on board with, with the new path that we have in front of us. Uh, so part of that, like uh, mem- uh, Vice President Novato elaborated on earlier is we're getting, we have a path now for career readiness. And that's starting all the way from, I believe in fifth grade. And so moving forward, we're checking and say, hey man, you know what? You're really good at math. Maybe we can, can get you towards an engineering program. You're good at science. Maybe something in physics is gonna be great for you. Or if hey, college doesn't seem like it's gonna be the right path for you, then let's look at the trades. And so you're either gonna be career ready, military ready. Because, you know, this town, this community has always had service members and uh, men and women that step up to the call and, and they come out of Questa High School. And, and that's something to be proud of. Uh, we have great uh, opportunities. Like we were talking about getting into either a nursing program or, or at least getting the prerec or sits done. And that takes partnership with UNM, that takes partnership with Luna College, that takes partnerships with, with Northern uh, partnerships with Highlands. So we are reaching out to our post-secondary educators and saying, hey, we, let's sit down, how could we work together to bring this uh, bring these trades a- and, and career opportunities to our kids? Um, we had a graduate last year that got an associate's degree when she graduated high school. How awesome is that? Since I've been on the board, she's the first one that got that accomplished. And I'm glad to s- say that, hey, you did it. And other people could do it, you know? But we gotta funnel our kids into that direction so, where you gotta have choices. So that you're ready to, to hit the ground running when you got that diploma. And so that's the, the framework, that's what we're working on and that's what we're building. And, and uh, like Mike said, have we got there yet entirely? No. And that's why I wanted a second term to see these projects uh, uh, bear the fruit, because we planted the seeds. And so that's for our high school kiddos. Now our, our elementary kiddos, Go Bond is huge. We need to have that. Uh, we, we need a better and safer learning environment for them. You know, coming from a law enforcement perspective, looking at that school, it, my God, it's a nightmare. But does the district have operational funds to, to change every single window that's on that building? Absolutely not. Uh, HVAC, plumbing, electrical, upgrading the fire line. Those are all huge things. If you touch the fire line to upgrade, you gotta upgrade the electrical. If you touch the plumbing, you gotta upgrade that to code. So to bring these buildings back up to code i- is just uh, a financial mountain that a district our size can't bear alone. And that's why we're pushing so hard. And I'm wholeheartedly asking people to, to vote yes for the Go Bond and yes to SB nine, because we need those funds, folks. Um, that's bringing, getting the Go Bond is allowing us the access to get to, to bring these facilities within four years into the district. And then from there, boy, we could really take off. But we're laying all the groundwork to prepare us for that. And also for like, you know, trades are huge. We did bring the uh, workforce, um, workforce, uh, what do you call it? The uh, the guys from, that do the unemployment and all that, they came, brought their trailer. Kids got to see what it is like to operate a backhoe and, and, and see what trades are out there uh, that they can really um, get a hold of. Because I'm gonna be honest with you, Michaela, and everybody out there. The Questa newspaper prints every, every uh, every month, a success story of somebody that came from Questa. And by God, we got doctors, lawyers, we've got businessmen. We've got successful businessmen in that uh, run gravel pits. They've got excavation companies. You know, carpentry, there, there's successful contractors, uh, and they've all come out of Questa. So we're doing good things. And every, every time May comes around and graduation comes around, I get to see who's getting their, their diploma from UNM, who's getting their diploma from Highlands. Who, who got their uh, their plumbing license, all those cool things, you know? And, and it's all because this community comes together and supports our kids. And I'm just proud and happy to say that I get a, I've, I've been, had the opportunity to uh, be a part of it. And I just think it's, it's great for us moving forward. So I encourage people, yes, vote for Jason for sure. Number two, vote for the Go Bond. And number three, yes to SB nine. And I hope um, to be another, uh, here still again for, for the future of this school and, and to be able to drive, continue uh, moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Appreciate it. Alright, Val, we're gonna start you out. Uh, tell us what your parting words.
Yeah, so I just wanna say thank you. Um, like I said, I, I rolled up my sleeves and I decided to go for it. And like I said, I'm, I'm hopping on the um, Women Are Powerful bandwagon. And I really truly believe that a woman on the board would be a great, a great thing. Um, I will say that I, I can, um, I can't speak for how it's been on the board. Like I said, I, this is, this would be my first term if, if elected, but what I can say right now is that I've heard concerns, I've heard good things, I've heard concerns, I've heard, you know, wants, I've heard needs. And I'm here to listen and I'm here to, you know, understand. I'm not saying that, you know, if elected, I'm gonna get on this board and magical things are gonna happen and all is gonna be well. But like I, like, you know, like Mike said, it's a learning curve. And I hope that I get the opportunity to show that I, you know, I'm willing to learn, I'm willing to, you know, um, bear the fruit of the seeds that have been planted and, you know, help out in, in all of those wonderful things that that, you know, are, are coming through the pipeline and creating new wonderful opportunities for the school district. I really, I'm a huge just advocate for community engagement. And when I say community engagement, I mean all of Northern, Northern New Mexico. So that includes, you know, Malia Costilla Cero. You know, Sunshine, Red River, Lama, the Hatchery. It, it, at the end of the day, it's all about the kids and it's all about ensuring that they get the education that they need. They're heard, their families are being heard. If there's needs, you know, let's help them. Let's help our community, let's help our students, let's help our, you know, those, those children that are getting raised by grandparents or uncles and aunts, parents, you know, let's, let's, what can we do to support them? What can we do to support our staff? And like I mentioned earlier, I, I understand that there's a chain of command, but I definitely also think that, you know, if there's these open forums, you know, I would hope that these educators would feel comfortable coming to those open forums to speak and to share their ideas. And to feel like if they do show up to these open forums, that they will be heard and they will be listened to. And you know, I, I want to just make that reiteration. You know, I do hope that I get the chance to, to show the, you know, the knowledge and the ability. Um, and all of the ideas that I do have, that I, I have the chance to bring them to the Questa School District as a woman on, on this panel. Um, you know, I, I feel very passionate about youth. I feel very passionate about growing in this community. I've made it my home. I've made a career here. Um, I've actually been able to make a lot of good changes in this community with my current job. And I would be honored to be elected for Questa's School District Board Member. And I hope that I got that opportunity and um, yeah.
Alright, thank you Val. Appreciate it. Mike, parting words.
Yeah, good luck to everybody, you know, we'll see what it brings. But uh, I just wanna thank everybody who's supported me, supported the board, supported the school um, throughout these last four years. You know, and, and whoever wins right, wrong or indifferent, we've got some great candidates for sure. So I don't think we can go wrong here, to be honest with you. I think either which way, it's gonna be a positive outcome. We're gonna continue to still move forward. So good luck to everybody. Thank our staff, you know, our students, everybody that helps this district out, you know, and, and trusting us with uh, your kids, you know, and uh, hopefully we can just keep moving forward and if I'm elected, awesome. And if not, I'll still be around, help out, might actually open me up to do some more uh, things with the school, you know, on, on the different realms. So no, I think it was a good night. I thank you guys for letting us have this platform to explain and talk and have this forum. And um, my little one was wanting to be on TV, but I guess not anymore. So I will say uh, thank you, Michaela. Appreciate it. Laura as well. Um, that's all I have. Good luck to everybody.
Thank you, Mike. Jose, parting words.
Alright, yeah, Michaela, Laura, thank you guys. The Questa Don Ryo News, it's, it's amazing. It's a, it's a great little paper and I I'm so glad to be, be able to contribute to that. And um, you guys are doing this forum for us. Um, this would be my fourth election. So that's the crazy part is this is the first time I've actually done a forum in all these elections. I've never had that. And I've gone against some people, some great people, and it's been some challenging, tough races and I've always wanted to just speak and just let me, let people know what, what I can bring to the table. And now what I bring is expertise. I bring knowledge. I bring uh, a lot of experience. I've been able to the same way when I got in back in two thousand thirteen, two thousand twelve. Uh, there was a couple of old, older board members that helped guide me along the way and they took me under the shoulder and they helped me along. Uh, Mr. Bernie Torres was a huge advocate. He was the president and he, after year one, he did the same thing that I think uh, we did with Jason, is we put him to president after year one, just to learn, learn by trial by fire. And I feel like I've been able to help guide the new board members over the last several years that have come in. And I, I truly cherish that. I've been a part of that piece. And that's why I think you need some experience on the board. And that's why I decided to continue running, cause I have a lot of uncomp- unaccomplished things. There is been things that, like I could say of what has been your biggest, your biggest thing that you've accomplished on that board. And I think being able to successfully see kids graduate year after year, I think is one of the biggest successes. Cause for a moment there, I was worried. I- it truly was worried and that's why I didn't decide to run was the state had truly taken over. And I'm not even talking about, they took over with the board, they took over with the superintendent as well. So they took over the entire district. So that's what I started with and I've been able to claw myself out of that. And now I am excited to get into this new, new piece. We have a, like I said, we got a huge roadmap. And I am tr- I am ready to finish what I started. Um, one more term. Bring my experience, bring my project management skills, put it to work and finish what uh, what this community deserves. So usually I don't say experience matters, but in this case, I think it does. And I think uh, I think uh, me being there is gonna be a huge benefit. And that's what I'm asking for is the community to give me a chance, give me put a check mark or a circle next to my name. Make sure you fill in the circle, people. Don't just put check mark or X's. You gotta, they circle the whole thing and vote for that Geo Bond, vote for the SB nine. The SB nine is critical as well. I know we've been talking about the Geo Bond, Geo Bond, Geo Bond. But the SB nine, I think is probably one of the most important things that we have there as well, cause that is the maintenance for our schools, the Red River schools and the Lama schools. So make sure that uh, you people are voting for those two things at a minimum. And then, like I said, may the best man and woman win uh, on the election. And I, it's been an honor talking with each and every one of you. It's been an honor to serve for the last thirteen years and I hope I get another four years to give the last of what I have left.
Awesome. Thank you, Jose. Alright guys, this was such a pleasure. Sorry it wasn't live, but it's fine. We're gonna publish it up and get it out there for people to see. Really appreciate you. If ever you have a story or anything you want us to cover, that's what we're here for. So um, always reach out, but best of luck in the election. We'll see who wins next week.
Yeah. And if you want a good article, go read the one about Jose Lovato on success stories.
He was a represent Have a good night.